I'd like to call forth Pastor Mike Atkins, please.
I'd like to call forth Pastor Mike Atkins, please.
Would you bow your heads with me? Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this evening. We thank you for every official, every person here. We thank you for Mayor Connolly. We thank you that you give wisdom when we ask. You give it liberally. So we thank you for a time to honor those who serve. But also, God, we ask that you would give us hearts to receive, hearts that are teachable and hearts that are available to hear first. And so, God, we thank you for all that you're doing, that your Spirit may be among us, and that it would produce good things, the fruit of your Spirit. We ask this in your son's name, we pray. We thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Technically, we've got next on the agenda, the swearing in of City Councilmember Will Bell. Can I get a motion to remove this from the agenda before we move forward?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
And now, I guess, we'll go through the roll call, Madam Clerk, so we know who just voted on it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Right. Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager.
I move we reinstate item four, the swearing in.
Mayor, I would request that the council make the following changes to the agenda. I would ask that the council remove item six, which is the updates to lease and memorandums of lease and execution of the termination of the memorandum of agreement for the Sidewalk Greenville LLC. I would also request that the council remove item number twenty-one, which is an ordinance requested by Charles Bullard for Fifty-eight Acres LLC to rezone, as a rezoning. And finally, I would request that the council, and I'm sorry, let me just back up. I would request that the council continue item twenty-one until the August eighteenth City Council meeting.
Okay.
But that the council would remove item thirty, which is the Pitt County Arts Council at a merged fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three contract for services. So just again, item six should be removed along with item thirty, and then continue item number twenty-one.
You want to add a closed session, too, right?
We would need a closed session, yes, sir.
Okay. Next one.
Move to approve the agenda as revised by the manager.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject of public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of thirty minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted thirty minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
First speaker is Ms. Tanya Foreman. Ms. Foreman, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council. Oh, you can come right up here to the public podium, ma'am.
Bless you. Good. How are you?
I don't know if I need a microphone. But again, my name is Tanya Foreman, and I am here tonight representing a group of concerned citizens about the American Legion Post One sixty that's located at seventeen hundred Chestnut Street. They have been using the American Legion building for decades now, it seems like about fifty years, and there's been a little uncertainty over the last six or seven months about how their use will continue. It has been communicated by leadership in the city, as well as city council members, that there are funds available to make renovations to that building. And so, there's a group of citizens here tonight that would like to get some clarity on that with questions such as, what's the timeline with the planned renovations of the building? We know that funds have been allocated, but has there been a timeline created? At what point was the city aware of the conditions that are making the building inhabitable, uninhabitable at this time? Does the city plan on renewing their lease? Now, we do know that the city had offered use of another building for them during this time, but there are a couple of challenges with the use of that building. Number one, it did not meet their needs based on the conversations that we've had with the veterans. But the other thing is that that location is also in West Greenville, right near where other locations are that offer services to the community. They have steadily offered services on the South Greenville side in the neighborhoods surrounding that building over the last fifty years. And then, when will you all be discussing that to be able to give them some clear and definitive answers? The American Legion building has been historically used to provide services to marginalized communities around that location, like I said. But the other thing that's really important to us is that these veterans, most of them are seventy-five and older, and they have not only served our country well, but they've served our community well. We just want to make sure that they're getting the answers that they desire, because these gentlemen and women not only served our country during the time when they dealt with racism in the ranks, but they dealt with racism abroad and Jim Crow when they came home. And so, we, as a community, just want to show them the appreciation that they deserve by giving them the respect and the answers that they desire. So that was what we'd like to discuss.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Madam Manager, do you want to try to answer some of those questions real quick?
I will try. Mayor Connolly, yes, Ms. Foreman, the American Legion Post has, for many, many years, had a lease. We discovered last summer that there were some very significant issues to the building, and that made the building uninhabitable. The council has identified plans to use some of the American Rescue Recovery Funds for the project to renovate that building. We have to, because of the very significant improvements that are needed and the repairs that are needed, we are in the process of engaging an architect now to develop a plan. I will tell you that the requirements of the American Rescue Plan is that the dollars be committed by December of twenty-four, and they be expended by December of twenty-six. We have a long list of projects that we're working on. This is a project that's on that list. We're gathering at this point information about what are the needed repairs that will have to be made and the funds that we have available for those improvements.
But funds have already been allocated?
At this point, the council has tentatively allocated those funds, a certain amount of funds. At this point, we don't even know if that is enough.
Okay.
Because there are very significant improvements that have to be made. Additionally, the council, we would anticipate, would talk about the final funding plan for those American Rescue Plan dollars in the August to September time period.
Okay. So they could expect to have some answers by?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I've met with the American Legion on that. I'm certainly available to meet. I returned your call. You and I missed call today, but I'm happy to give you a call and talk about that.
Okay. We appreciate you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I see a lot of the members out there. I have spoken to several of the members, including Mr. Huggins and Mr. Davis and Mr. Harris. Not, not, anyway. But I'd spoken to several of the members. Some have been to my house, and some, we've talked on the telephone. So we're working on it. I did get monies allocated from the Harper money, as the city manager said, and if there's any more money, we'll have to figure out how to come up with that. The building is in really, really bad shape, and you really, you guys don't even need to be in there, because it's not good for seniors or children to be in lead paint. The floors are lead, the walls are lead, everything is lead-based paint. So we will be working on all of that. When we do it, we're going to completely fix it, and then we'll go from there. And the manager, you can call the manager if you have any questions, or you can call me, two five two seven one four three nine seven zero.
If anybody needs pens, I'll hand them out.
Two five two. Mr. Huggins has it. Two five two seven one four three nine seven zero. That is my cell number. Mr. Huggins has that, and if you have any more questions, please give me a call. I am anxious to get the building fixed and up and running as you guys are. Thank you.
Or if you just need somebody to talk to at, like, ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night, you can give the Mayor Pro Tem a call, and she'll be happy to speak with you.
I'm always up.
All right. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, there are no additional registered speakers.
All right. Anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Glover, other members of the Greenville City Council. First, I want to say on behalf of Post One sixty, ask me to say this, to congratulate each and every one of you on the council for the next coming two years, and also to let you know that we're looking forward to working with the new council and keeping something, either that building, something to recognize that building, so we can keep the work that we've been doing for the lasting thirty years in that area. And congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About to walk away from my commanders over there. The two fellows on the end, Bush Dury, commander, if you will stand, and Dennis, commanders. These are our two commanders that are here this evening. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for your service. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. No one? All right. We will close the public comment period. We will move on to special recognitions. Madam Manager.
Thank you, ma'am. I will ask our staff from Financial Services and Purchasing to come forward. Ladies? Thank you. Am I live?
Live.
Hold it. It's out here.
Stars of the show.
There we go.
It's always my privilege as city manager to recognize the great work of our city staff, and I get that honor again tonight. I want to recognize the Financial Services Department Purchasing Division, who met the requirements to receive the 2021 Sustained Professional Purchasing Award. This marks the fourteenth year that the purchasing division has received this award. This award is presented annually by the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing to member agencies that demonstrate excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. The criteria for the award has included the use of technology, minority outreach, staff certification, customer training, vendor training, and the use of recycled products. The City of Greenville Financial Services Purchasing Division is one of fourteen agencies throughout the association that have received this award. And this award was presented to the staff at the banquet on March sixteenth of 2022. I think we have the award here, and I'll hand it to Byron. And I do just want to recognize our staff members. So we have Wanda House, who is a Financial Services Manager, Cheryl House, who is the buyer, and Tish Williams, who is our MWBE Coordinator. So please join me in congratulating the ladies, these ladies. And gentlemen, and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate the hard work.
Best of the state.
There you go.
Yeah.
Best of the state.
Yep.
Same with our attorney's office. And the city manager's office.
That's right.
And the clerk's office.
The council's kind of shady, though.
All right. Let's move on to appointments. We'll start with item number two, appointments to boards and commissions.
So we do have a few boards that have got assigned seats. The rest, we can come back to at a later meeting once the liaisons are assigned.
Thank you very much.
For Board of Adjustment. First is Mayor Pro Tem Glover for Rodney Bullock's seat. Okay, all right. Next is Nathan Brandon's seat, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to continue that item.
Okay. Next is the Greenville Utilities Commission, Councilmember Daniels, the seat for Ms. Minnie Anderson.
I would like to appoint Mr. Marcus Jones, please.
Anybody want to second that? All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
We do have a couple of other appointments on the Greenville Utilities Commission, just the way this board is structured. Typically, once they're appointed to a first term, it'll automatically roll into a second. So we do have two structured just like that. One is for Councilmember Rick Smiley, Peter Geiger's seat.
I'm reappointing Peter Geiger.
Okay.
Do you need me to make a motion?
Okay.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Right. Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations and keep up the good work, Mr. Geiger.
Okay. Next is, again, structured that same way, for Councilmember Robinson, Lindsey Griffin's seat.
Mayor, I would make a motion to nominate Lindsey Griffin to, again, serve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Griffin, and keep up the good work.
Next, we have the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority, Councilmember Smiley, the seat for Eric Clark.
I have identified a candidate, but he hasn't sent in the form yet, so I'll continue that.
All right, yes, sir. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee, and again, this is a direct appointment. Councilmember Daniels for Kivion Gainer's seat.
I'll continue that, please.
Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and let's see, first is for Mayor Pro Tem Glover, Michael Overton's seat. He's ineligible to serve.
Okay, he's ineligible. Okay, so I'd like to appoint Andrew Denton.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Denton.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Daniels, Billy Parker's seat. He is eligible to be reappointed.
Continue, please.
Okay. Next is Mayor Connolly. You have a recommendation to make for Les Robinson.
Yeah, this is going to be a really hard pick. The guy that I'm replacing was an excellent, excellent commissioner, and we're really going to miss him, so I'm going to have to continue this one.
All right, yes, sir.
He's back.
And final seat for this board is for Councilmember Robinson, for Alan Brock's seat, and he is eligible to be reappointed.
Mayor, it's a pleasure to serve on planning and zoning, and I serve with Mr. Brock, and I would take honor to make a motion that he be reappointed.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations and keep up the good work, Mr. Brock.
Okay. And next, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission. Mayor Connolly, you do have a recommendation to make there for Derek Clark's seat. He is eligible to be reappointed.
I think you did that already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that the last.
I think we did that last year.
Did we? Okay, yeah, sorry.
I think, because you made the motion for him, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay. We will update that. So let me check. Councilmember Bell for Michael Sad's seat. He's ineligible.
Yeah, I'd like to continue that one, please.
Okay. And that concludes our appointments to boards and commissions.
All right, and we'll move on to item number three, and I think we're going to have to, I'm going to have to ask that we continue that to the appointments to the city councilmembers to boards and committees, or is that the, is that the one that?
That's like the audit and investment.
So it's not the, okay. All right, then we won't continue that one.
You want to go ahead and do that one?
Yeah, I mean, unless everybody, is everybody prepared for it? Okay.
Okay. So we do have some councilmember committees. The first one up is the Audit and Investment Committee. Three members serve on that board, so we will need three appointees.
All right. Anybody really excited to serve on that?
Did you ask who's currently serving now?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's that?
Okay. Currently on that board is Mayor Pro Tem Glover, Councilmember Smiley, and then one vacancy.
Ooh.
I will appoint, I will nominate Will Bell to serve.
I think that's a great nomination. Anybody want to second that one?
Second that.
All right, I like that.
And I'll nominate Rick Smiley.
All right. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right, I got another second.
Do we need to vote on the other ones?
Can we do all three at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Do we have a third one now?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
You, okay, so you want to, you want to make a nomination of Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I do.
Okay, second by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All right, we'll take a combined vote on this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations to my colleagues, Councilmember Bell, Mayor Pro Tem Glover, and Councilmember Smiley.
All right. The next committee is the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee. Currently serving right now is Mayor Pro Tem Glover and Councilmember Smiley. We need two appointees.
I think they've done an incredible job.
And I say they do it again.
You want to make the motion, then?
I nominate, can I do both?
Yeah.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem Glover and Councilmember Smiley.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Councilmember Smiley and Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Keep up the good work.
More meetings.
Okay, and finally, is the Taxi Cab Appeal Board. Currently serving is Mayor Pro Tem Glover, and we need one appointee.
You like it? I nominate Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Second.
All right. So motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Glover. I think you're the big winner so far. Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Is that it?
And that concludes the appointments to the.
All right. Let's go with the number four, appointments to the Greenville ENC Alliance Board. Are we prepared for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Robert Cherry, please.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Cherry. Keep up the good work. Any other, not, we've got three total nominations, so we have two remaining.
That's correct.
One of them has to be a council member.
One has to be a council member. That's correct.
Anybody?
Do you want to continue?
I'm happy to.
I move we reappoint Councilman Bell to continue his service.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. All right, and we've got one more remaining. Does anybody have a name that they would like to nominate for that position? If not, I mean, we can always re.
I may we continue and find it appropriate.
That'll give everybody enough time to be able to really rack their brains to come up with the best pick ever. Everybody okay with that, if we continue that?
Okay, so continuing the third appointment.
Yeah, so we've got two, and we need a third one. Okay.
Okay. And that concludes our appointments.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items: a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Davenport Farm at Emerald Park, Phase Six Cluster Development. Item number seven is a subordination agreement involving the sale of a hotel property to Greenville to support Greenville Convention Center. Okay. Item number eight is a resolution declaring the former Greenville Utilities Commission Operations Center property located on Mumford Road a surplus to the needs of the Greenville Utilities Commission and the City of Greenville, and authorizing its disposition by the upset bid method. Item number nine is a resolution declaring a surplus and authorizing the disposition of fourteen heavy-duty vehicles by electronic auction. Item number ten is authorization to submit a 2022 COPS Technology and Equipment Program application. Item number eleven is authorization to submit a COPS Office FY 2022 Community Policing Development micro grant application. Item number twelve is a contract award for Kimley Horn for the Comprehensive Recreation and Parks Master Plan. Item number thirteen is the contract award for professional services for mowing slash landscape maintenance for the Homestead Memorial Garden Cemetery. Item number fourteen is a contract award for professional services for mowing slash landscape maintenance for Greenwood Cemetery. Item number fifteen is the third year renewal of a contract with the Pitt County for the Pitt Area Transit PATS to provide paratransit services for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And item number sixteen are various tax refunds greater than one hundred dollars.
All right. I believe we have a councilmember that would like to pull a couple of those items.
Yes.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull out items seven, eight, and twelve from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember, actually, Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll jump to item number seven. Madam Manager, do you want to?
Certainly. Item number seven is the subordination agreement involving the sale of the hotel property to support Greenville Convention Center. I believe that City Attorney McGirt has that, can answer any questions.
Yeah.
Just looking at it, you know, I mean, I see the details, but could you kind of put it in context and talk a little bit about the bigger picture? Just some information about it.
Yeah, this is a financing item where the city has a right to repurchase the hotel property if it's ever sold, and it's a subordination agreement where the city is in second position, and it allows the owner, Greenville Prime Investors, where the manager is Tom Glennon, to get financing with a lender, and they would be in first position. And there's already an agreement like that in place, and they're just refinancing the property, and so it's really, status quo would remain.
So this is not a new sale. This is just a refinance. Is that right?
Exactly.
And, but nothing changes, none of the moving pieces change?
No, the city stays in second position.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll move on to item number eight. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Item eight is. Thank you. Item eight is a resolution declaring the former Greenville Utilities Commission Operations Center property located on Mumford Road a surplus to the needs of Greenville Utilities Commission and the City of Greenville and authorizing its disposition by the upset bid method. I do not see anyone here from G U C. Councilmember Blackburn, I will attempt to answer any questions.
I think my, my question here is, this is a lot of land, and this is an important piece of property. Do, do we know who's interested? Do we know a little bit about what the, the future would be for this property? I mean, it's, it's twelve different parcels, and it's, it's, of course, it's floodland, but it's over there in a part of, of our city that I know there's a lot of interest in, you know, economic development as well as flooding, so just wanted some context for this sale, if there's anyone that's interested, if there's any, has, have there been any plans discussed for possible uses? Or is it just gonna be sold kind of to the highest bidder, you know, all comers?
Right, and so the upset bid process would be that it would be sold to the highest bidder. In this particular case, as we all know, Greenville Utilities Commission has developed a new operations center on Highway 43. What they have determined is that they no longer need this land because they don't, they no longer need this land on Mumford Road. They have chosen to declare it a surplus, put it for upset bid. The process would be that Greenville Utilities would receive an opening bid. At that point, they would begin the upset bid process, it would be advertised, they would take bids for that. Any development that would have, that would occur on the site would certainly have to be in conformance with our planning and zoning ordinance.
What is the current zoning on that property?
And we'll call for our Chief Planner, Shante Gooby.
Got my trusty computer out. Give me one second.
And, and what does the land use plan call for there?
Okay, wish I could share it with you, but you'll just have to take my word for it, so to speak. So, right now, that property currently has residential zoning, so it has R six and R twenty zoning. And then, the land use plan does recommend a, I would just say, a portion of that property as industrial, however, it does have green or potential conservation open space around it as well, which does, again, serve as a caution to any kind of potential environmental constraints.
Thanks, Shante. I think, and of course, this is the first time I'm seeing this, and this, and this may be far beyond anything that's, the city council has anything, has any decision-making ability over. I'm just looking at it, I'm looking at a lot of land, I'm looking at floodplain land, I'm looking at land very near River Park North, and I'm wondering, you know, if, if there's any kind of, just kind of looking far down the road at what this could be, and perhaps working with either a potential buyer or trying to develop some kind of way forward for this property. And it sounds like, at present, it's being handled pretty much like a private real estate sale would be, would be conducted, that someone comes and they make a bid, versus something where there is kind of a vision for what it could be, and a, and a plan for what it could be, and, and inviting, you know, the buyer to perhaps buy into that plan. Do I have that right?
Certainly, the general statutes and the Attorney McGirt can specify, the general statutes provide for the mechanisms that communities may use to sell surplus property. That is the profit, the method that G U C is using. I am not aware of any conceptualization of any plans or master planning of that site. I'm not aware of that.
Okay, okay. That answers my question, certainly. I mean, it just, looking at it, looking at the sale and looking at that part of our community where we do have many sort of hopes and dreams for, and to see this just kind of as an opportunity. It sounds like as, as, as of present, there's not anything that has come up for this property to be used for, and I guess, and again, it's, it's beyond the purview of city council, but I appreciate that information.
I will also add too, I've had a conversation with Tony Cannon about this, and he had mentioned that, I think it is, quote, I may be wrong on this price, but I'm, it's relatively in this ballpark. He said it's roughly, I think, $20,000 a month, I think, just to maintain that particular site over there, to be able to keep it up and operating. And now that they've been able to transition over to their new site, there's just not a need for it, and I guess they're viewing it as more or less a liability as opposed to an asset at this point, and I don't know if they have any interest or not, but.
I, I do understand that it is very costly to maintain.
Okay. All right, any other questions for staff? Anybody wanna entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is a contract award to Kimley Horn for the Comprehensive Recreation and Parks Master Plan. Recreation and Parks Director Dawn Octagon is available for questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see you again.
Good to see y'all.
Just looking at this for the first time, I was, I was here when we did the first master plan, Parks Master Plan, so it's good to see that it's being updated. Do you have some context? I mean, I read the, I read the information, the agenda packet, but do you have some context from where you sit? And, and, and what, what are your hopes and dreams for this, or are we just turning it all over to the consultant and say, go for it?
No, I work very closely with the consultant. We did interview this consultant, and we reviewed five submittals, and Kimley Horn by far was, they very organized, very detailed, they have a lot of experience. And so we will work very closely with Kimley Horn, along with community stakeholders, to make sure the comprehensive master plan gives us a direction and vision for our department to enhance our programming and enhance our park system.
And will there be broad, broadcast invitations to the community to participate?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, one of our interview questions were, was how public engagement will work. We want to make sure this comprehensive master plan reaches our entire community.
Open houses, for example?
Open houses. Be some in-person, be some Zoom. I'm just depending on, through this, we'll be monitoring a lot of, you know, how the pandemic goes, and that, per their contract, they have to, so it'll be a combination of in-person and Zoom and across the, each district.
Perfect. Oh, so there'll be meetings maybe in each district?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, perfect.
And all of our stakeholders will be through, throughout the community.
Now, this is a master plan of master plans. Is that sort of an accurate way to talk about this Parks Master Plan?
Yeah, this will cover our entire park system.
So what about, and this gets at something that, that I'm very interested in. What about individual park master plans? Will this address the status of those, perhaps the absence of those, parks' needs, or will it get down to that kind of granular level?
So the consultant will review every master plan that we've had. They'll review the current master plan, it was in 2008, and we'll review each of the current master plans we have for each park we have on file currently that's been done since 2008.
So it could, it will make recommendations for, for globally as well as recommendations, but he can't develop a master plan. The Mas, the Parks Master Plan might say this park lacks a master plan, but it won't actually go to, to, into that, creating a master plan for.
It'll be able to give us some ideas of some, if we, if we have a needs assessment of some areas in our community, what's missing, based on the assessment and based on the community feedback. And also be able to see, give us insight on each park as far as enhancements we could look at doing. And to make sure we're meeting the needs of the public.
This is just great news all around. Any idea, don't you love a deadline? Any idea how long this is gonna take and kind of some of the phases?
Sure. No, we, we are, we're gonna start this as soon as we, we get it signed, and hopefully be done in probably about the spring of 2023.
And the public meetings may begin as early as?
Well, we want to make sure we, we meet with the consultant, make sure they understand our expectations, city council expectations, and the city as a whole, before we get started with any public. So we want to make sure they have a chance to review all the documents before we really dive into public. But I, I'll say probably by August, we can have some more tentative deadlines, timelines, as far as how the public input will go.
That's fantastic. This is really great news, and I am very pleased to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we will finish up with the consent agenda. We'll move on to new business, which is public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total of, for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I will remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and of the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seventeen is an ordinance to annex Bobby W. Joyner property involving 5.84 acres, located along the northern right-of-way of East Fire Tower Road and west of Meeting Place. Chief Planner, Shante Gooby, has that presentation.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
That sounded a little bit like one of those car commercials on the radio, so you did a very good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is an annexation that's located in the southeast quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located north of Fire Tower Road. It's to the east of Meeting Place Drive. The existing city limits is shown in green. The subject property is shown in red. This property is located in the Meeting House Branch Watershed, so it will require 25-year detention. It'll be located in voting District Number Four. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. The anticipated development will be eighty multifamily units, an estimated tax value of $16 million, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Do you have a discussion item?
Just a question.
Sure.
Do we know what is going here? Is there a site plan?
That's just an annexation.
An annexation. It's just a footprint.
Right, I'm just wondering, do we know what's going there?
I believe Ms. Gooby went over the.
I, I can tell you with this particular one, we do have a site plan in for this. Sometimes we do have to sort of anticipate. This will be eighty multifamily senior apartments.
Eighty multifamily senior apartments. And what's the zoning over there? It seems like that was recently, some of that was changed to CH or Neighborhood Commercial.
No, that would be on the opposite side of the street. This is on, this is on the opposite side of Harris Teeter. So this was rezoned to office residential back in 2019.
Okay, okay, all right, got it.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eighteen. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Eighteen is an ordinance to annex Cottleton Funeral Home, locate, involving 3.66 acres, located along the northern right-of-way of the East Tenth Street and south of Port Terminal Road. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This property is located roughly in the eastern section of the city. It's more specifically located along East Tenth Street. It is west of Port Terminal Road. It's located in the Hardy Creek Watershed. It will require 10-year detention. It'll be located in voting District Number Three. It's located in a primary service area. The anticipated use would be a 12,000-square-foot funeral home, and the anticipated tax value would be $15 million.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gooby?
Yes, I do. I have questions.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. This is new construction.
Yes.
And this is, this, this is actually the one I was looking at. This is going on the corner of Port Terminal and 33.
Not quite at the corner, up the street from it.
Right, right, and this does have, it does face Tenth Street East?
Yes.
And do you have an idea of the square footage and the traffic? Because I'm seeing this for the, you know, it's the first time being up here, square footage of this?
12,000 square feet.
Okay, and then what I'm looking at, does that show the parking area as well as the building?
This only shows you the entire boundary of the property.
Okay, so this doesn't have any detail in terms of where the building will go and the parking? Do you have a site plan for this?
Uh, I'm not sure that we do. A lot of times, those generally will run in conjunction with one another. However, you don't have to have one to have the other, so you can annex a piece of property without a site plan.
Okay, and I guess a funeral home is a, what kind of zoning, that, that, there's a lot of zonings that would encompass a funeral home, is that right?
Right, it could be office or commercial. In this case, this is commercial zoning.
Right, right, because I knew, I knew this was the area that had recently been zoned to commercial. All right, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person is 10 minutes, and all others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number nineteen. Madam Manager.
Item nineteen is an ordinance to annex the Kate Vincent Kittrell property involving 12.04 acres, located along the southern right-of-way of Dickinson Avenue and west Arlington Boulevard. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This property is located in the southwestern quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located along Dickinson Avenue. It is adjacent to Cross Creek Townhomes. It's located in Greens Mill Run Watershed. It will require 25-year detention. It'll be located in voting District Number Two. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. Anticipated development is 100 multi, 180 multifamily units. Estimated tax value is $38 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? This is the particular property, I believe, that we, is this the one that we partnered with? Am I on the wrong one now?
Sir, this is for a affordable housing development.
With the Taft Mills Group. All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak, to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Blackburn?
Question. Do we know what the effects could be downstream from this development? I know you talked about, you know, it was in the watershed and.
This is just an annexation, right?
Oh, this was.
This is just a, this is.
This was not a rezoning, okay, never mind.
Any other questions? All right, motion's been made. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 20.
20 was an ordinance requested by BFC Allen Road LLC to rezone 1.52 acres located along the southern right-of-way of Norfolk and Southern Railroad between Allen Road and Spring Forest Road from RA 20 to R6. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This property is located in the western section of the city. It's more specifically located between Allen Road and Spring Forest Road. It's just south of the railroad tracks. This is a photograph of the property taken from alongside... This is Spring Forest Road is where this picture is taken from. This particular piece of property is just a little over one and a half acres, and I do have a mouse, there we go. And I'd like to point out, this particular piece of property is landlocked, and it is under common ownership of the property here just to the south. It would be anticipated that this piece of property would be developed in conjunction with the adjoining piece of property. The property is located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it will require 25-year detention. There's no special hazard area, wetland streams, or buffers. Due to the size of the property, it is undevelopable, as again, I'll just say, this is going to more than likely be incorporated with the property to the south. Traffic volume report was not generated. Currently, the property is zoned RA 20. The requested zoning is for R6. As you can see, it is surrounded by R6 zoning. The future land use plan map recommends commercial at the corner of Allen Road and the railroad tracks, transitioning into traditional neighborhood medium to high density. The requested zoning of R6 is part of that character. So in staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan, the future land use plan map. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission at its May 17 meeting unanimously recommended to approve their request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seena?
Move to approve.
I know you're excited about this one, but we've got to go through the process. All right, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. And Mr. Anderson was like, sitting back, like, "I don't even have to go through this process." They're going to bypass the public hearing.
That's right, that's right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Anderson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I hope this is a simple one to ease our new members back into. So as Ms. Gooby stated, this property is in common ownership with a larger parcel to the south, and the intent is to recombine those parcels into one larger development. So just trying to clean up some zoning lines and get it all under the same zoning. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Anderson? Seena, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. All right, seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion?
He used to live on a railroad track. I'm really... Can't wait to see the houses built so I can check it out again. Three trains a day. Check the house, it's cool.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number 22.
22 is an ordinance requested by Greenberry Real Estate Company to rezone .238 acres located along the eastern right-of-way of Cromwell Drive and south of Lindell Court from OR and R6 to R9S. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located... This would be south of Redbanks Road. This is Cromwell Drive. This is a photograph of the property. So this is taken along Cromwell. Redbanks would be to your left. This part, or this rezoning is two tenths of an acre, and I'm going to get to why they're doing it. You can sort of see a lot of lines on this survey. I'm going to make it simple for you. This property is located in the Meeting House Branch watershed. It would require 25-year detention. There are no wetland streams or buffers. Again, this is two tenths of an acre. It's not developable on its own, so no traffic report was generated. And so this is the zoning map, and you can see, it's a little hard to see, but this property actually has two zonings on it. There's blue, which is office residential, and then there's just a little tiny hint of R6. The intent of this property is, it's already been annexed, and it's been platted for single-family homes. And so this is going to be the first lot for the homes inside of Lindell. And so what they're doing is they're cleaning these lot lines up. First of all, OR does not allow single-family homes, and also this will give clean zoning lines on the lot, for the lots. The future land use character map recommends mixed use along Redbanks Road. It transitions into office institutional, which is sort of that pink or purple color, and then you go into traditional, or you go into low to medium residential. So the requested zoning is part of that character. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan, the future land use plan map, and staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission at its May 17 meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gooby? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right, seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All right, seeing none. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion?
I just have a question. I know the zoning, once it has the zoning, anything can go there, but this is likely going to be used for a single-family home, or is this going to be part of a larger...
This is going to be part of Lindell subdivision. So they have already platted out the lots, but this has the OR zoning on it, so they are going to fix it so that the zoning lines and the lot lines will match.
Okay. And as far as what kind of, what will be built there, do we know that?
Single-family home.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? All right, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 23.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 23 is an ordinance requested by K-Save Ventures LLC to rezone a total of 8.722 acres located along the northern right-of-way of NC Highway 43 and Maddox Road from RA 20, MO, and MRs to MR. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located along Fifth Street. This is palate-in-place duplexes to the right-hand side. This request is made up of two separate tracks. However, the requested zoning is the same. So it's MR, which is multifamily zoning. This is a photograph of the property, so this is taken along West Fifth Street. Downtown would be to your right. This is a survey of the property. The combined total for this rezoning is a little over eight, or almost a little over eight and a half acres. Track one, which is along Fifth Street, it's roughly six acres, and then track two is this triangular piece that's a little over an acre and a half. This property is located in the Harris Mill Run watershed. It will require 10-year detention. Track two specifically is in a special hazard area. A floodplain development permit and an erosion control plan will be required. There are wetlands, streams, and buffers. This rezoning could generate a net increase of 122 trips per day, which is an increase over the full build-out at the current zoning and full build-out at the requested zoning. Track one, again, which is close to Fifth Street, is currently zoned medical office. It could yield approximately 40,000 square feet of office, and under the requested zoning, it could yield about 70 multifamily units. Track two, in and of itself, again, isn't developable, but what it will do is it will square off the back of this particular piece of property, and it'll give it the same zoning. The future land use plan map shows traditional neighborhood medium to high density along Fifth Street, and that goes to the north. And then you also have the green, which is the potential conservation open space. Again, that's just serving as a caution for potential environmental constraints. As stated earlier, a floodplain development permit and an erosion plan, an erosion control plan, will be required. In staff's opinion, this request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan, the future land use plan map. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley?
Could you go back to the floodway map? The one with all the blue? At least I assume it's blue.
It is blue.
Thank you. So the part up there, the northern section, we'll call the right triangle, is there... You know, you said there'll be, you know, plans required for that, but is it feasible to actually put a footprint of a building in that? Are they likely to move the density to the developable parts?
Yes, this is really going to transfer density.
No further questions, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
Just to follow up on Councilmember Smiley, it looks like this is in the floodway or the... I know it's in the floodplain. It looks like the 100-year floodplain, and it also looks like it's somewhere in the... Oh, there's the... Okay.
That's the floodway. This is the...
Okay, got it. Didn't see the key. Okay, good. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley, for the clarification.
I'm driving the math here. She's driving the agenda. It's very... We're in partnership.
There you go. Teamwork, that's what we're all about. All right, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other questions for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 24. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Item 24 is an ordinance requested by FP Dickinson LLC to rezone to amend Title IX, Chapter IV, Appendix A, Table of Uses of the City Code to add a Code 14C bakery, production, storage, and shipment facilities as a permitted use in the general commercial zoning district. Again, Ms. Gooby.
I never want to jinx anything by saying it's pretty simple, but this is a fairly simple text amendment. This is an amendment to add the use of a bakery, which can be a small bakery, it can be a big bakery, to the commercial, or to the general commercial zoning district. This was something that staff looked at. This is a private request that came in. Also, as part of staff's review, we did look to see if there were any other additional districts that might be needed. We felt like the general commercial district made sense, but there were no other districts that we felt needed to be added to this request. So this is just showing you a snip of the Table of Uses. You can see it's already located, or it's already allowed in some commercial districts and also some industrial districts as well. Staff recommends approval of the request. This is within Horizons. We have Policy 4.31, which talks about modernizing and diversifying the local economy and supporting the growth of a variety of employment opportunities and businesses. With that, staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission at its May 17 meeting unanimously recommended approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
I have a question.
All right, Councilmember Blackburn?
Are we getting a new bakery?
No.
Oh, drought. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number 25. Madam Manager.
Thank you. 25 is an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling unit located at 1303 West Third Street, known as Tax Parcel 23007. Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, Les Everett, will have that presentation. Mr. Everett.
Thank you. Mayor and council, great to see you tonight.
Good to see you as well.
As you can see, we will be dealing with 1303 West Third Street and requesting demolition. We have here our parcel information, an aerial to locate the parcel. The information we have is it's been vacant for several years, definitely prior to 2019. No current active utilities on the site. Building value and land value together total $19,936. The estimated cost to repair is over $100,000, and therefore, it's over 50% of the building value, which meets dilapidated criteria. Our estimated cost of demolition is $5,000. I'd like to show you some pictures of this property, and again, it has some extravonal siding, which is covering a lot of the deteriorated, dilapidated members. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance for demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 1303 West Third Street, and of course, we'll be ready to begin any days after approval, should you so choose.
All right, any questions for Mr. Everett?
I do.
Here we go. Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a quick question, just because I'm new to the process. Where there's air, where there is an air property situation, not to get too much into the weeds, but it can be often, it can be very difficult to track down all the airs in an airs property situation. They may not even know they're airs. Again, this is clearly a property that cannot be restored. I'm just curious about the process when it comes to air property and airs, tracking them down, when it may be very difficult to do that.
We do due diligence in all our research and work very closely with our city attorney's office to ensure that we go through the steps and these are properly published, proper letters sent out, and we do our best to notify everyone that we can get our, you know, through title searches or any hearsay. So we do due diligence. So we do due diligence.
And and the reason I ask is is that I, in my experience with air properties, there's a lot of land loss because of air property situations. And the house, we saw the pictures, it looks awful. But this 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 is family land that that people are losing. And, you know, as such, it's it's a big deal. So I just kind of wanted to get a little bit more information about how that process was conducted.
I would like to clarify. In this case, the city will, we will initiate the demolition of the structure. The the property will still remain in the in the name of those that own the property, only at the time that they either sell the property or the city chooses to foreclose on the lien, which will be placed on the property because of the demolition. But in this case, this does not take the property away from the property owner. We're just simply demolishing the unit.
Okay. And then and then for the cost of demolition?
For the cost of demolition.
There's a there's a lien.
We will lien the property.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
For the safety measures, as you will see.
Okay. Thank you for all that information.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those speaking on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number twenty-six. Madam manager?
Thank you. Item twenty-six is an ordinance amending the floodplain damage prevention ordinance text to amend the freeboard requirements for manufactured homes to align with the model ordinance. Daryl Norris has the presentation. Mr. Norris?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Daryl Norris. I'm the floodplain administrator for the city. What we have tonight is a text amendment to our floodplain development ordinance. And I'll give you a little background of why we need this. The city is part of a program called the Community Rating System. This is a program that allows for discounts on flood insurance rates for all of the citizens within our jurisdiction. It's a voluntary program. The city participates in, and it helps to reduce and avoid flood losses. All of the activities that we do earn us points. And those points get get us ratings that increase the discounts to flood insurance premiums to every citizen that buys flood insurance in our in our jurisdiction. Each class that we achieve, it requires about five hundred points and and equates to about a additional five percent discount for insurance premiums for properties within the special flood hazard area. The city is currently a Class Seven, which equates to a fifteen percent reduction in flood insurance premiums within the special flood hazard area. We have recently been reviewing our ordinance for compliance with the state model ordinance and the community rating system in order to maximize those points. City staff has reviewed this, as well as staff from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. Our present ordinance requires changes to meet certain community rating system prerequisites and align with the model ordinance, and I'll go through what those are. We are about to embark on our five-year review. Every five years, we go through a rescore with the CRS community. That's going to happen in August. And we are certainly looking to reduce our class and score better than we have previously. The there is a new requirement that is a Class Eight prerequisite. This requires a minimum of one foot freeboard that includes manufactured homes and all of their associated ductwork and equipment. Previously, ductwork for manufactured homes was allowed to be within and below the freeboard, as long as it was above the base flood elevation. This new requirement requires that the ductwork also be elevated above that freeboard limit. This is an image to kind of better explain what we're talking about. The BFE is the base flood elevation. That's the hundred-year floodplain elevation. And the freeboard is an additional factor of safety on top of that elevation that we regulate new development and improvements to. Currently, the city has a two-foot freeboard for new development, and that applies to the finished floor elevation of most homes. Because of because of these prerequisite requirements, the ductwork and equipment previously would be allowed between that base flood elevation line and that freeboard line, as long as the finished floor was above the freeboard line. These new requirements will require that ductwork to also be above that freeboard line. It's important to note this applies to new development, new homes, or those that have substantial damage or substantial improvement that equates to at least forty-nine percent or greater of the home's value. Without this amendment to our ordinance, when we get rescored, it would lower the discounts for insurance premiums, because we would we would default back to a Class Nine and only only eligible for a five percent discount, rather than our current fifteen, or what we hope to improve and gain additional additional discounts for our citizens. We do recommend, staff recommends, adopting the ordinance to amend the floodplain ordinance to align with the state model ordinance and maximize credit in the community rating system. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Councilmember Smiley?
How long have we been at Class Seven?
I know as long as I have been here, so it's five or six years since I've been here. But for some time.
Were we ever at six?
We have never been lower than a seven.
All right. Any other questions? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Do you want to go speak? Have at it. Have at it. Mr. Graves, would you like to come up to the podium? Thank you for your input. All right. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Mr. Cowan, would you like to come up?
Making a break the record, usually the last thing they say is with liberty and justice for all.
Just going to make sure they're here. All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. To Rick's point, Councilmember Smiley's point, we're at seven. That means there's six more levels higher we could be. Are we aiming for higher levels? Or are they just for metro areas? Are they just for certain kind of cities? Is there any reason we're we're at seven?
Yes, ma'am.
And almost tumbled into eight?
Yes, to all of those. So first of all, there there were some prerequisite requirements that have since been resolved by the state of North Carolina, adopting new building codes that had us limited to a seven, and we could not get any lower until those were resolved in adopting updated building codes. Those have since been resolved, and we are now eligible to score better than a seven. We do anticipate lowering our score. Of course, that's not guaranteed until we get scored. But we 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 are certainly shooting for at least a class or two lower than we are currently. In in the country, I believe there's one, Class One, in the entire United States. In the state of North Carolina, the lowest class is Charlotte. They are a Class Four, and there are three Class Fives. And there are there are a few Class Sixes. And we will we will hopefully be joining those ranks shortly after we get rescored in August.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that information, because it seems to me this is a way to protect our community from flooding, because if you have better flood insurance rates, that implies that you are safer from floods. It seems that this would be a desirable direction, and it sounds like this is, in fact, where we're at. Do I have that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Motion's been made, properly second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Here we go. Item number twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to point out that items number twenty-seven and twenty-eight relate to incentives and agreements related to Patheon Manufacturing Services and expansions in Greenville. We've kind of done with the Greenville-NC Alliance will provide a presentation. Ms. Dunn will provide one presentation that will address both items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. We will ask that the council have separate hearings on either combo items. I'll read those items very quickly. Item twenty-seven is a resolution to approve an agreement with NC Biotech Technology Centering Performance Agreement with Patheon Manufacturing LLC for Project Lucky. Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Thank you, council, for having me tonight to speak a little bit about some new opportunities that have come up with Project Lucky. If you can recall, it was a while back that you all were first introduced to Project Lucky. It is the need to expand and increase the existing facility's sterile liquid filling and their LIFO field, filling, pre-field, pre-field syringe capabilities. This project also will add to their solid dose continuous manufacturing capability at the existing facility. Project Lucky will create two hundred and ninety jobs in the areas of plant support, supervisors, technicians, and production workers, paying an average salary of approximately sixty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-six, which is over our average salary of forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. The capital investment for Project Lucky over five years will be a hundred and fifty-four million dollars, fifty-three million of which will be in real property and one hundred and one million in machinery and equipment. Our ask is that the city council consider waiving a portion of the permit waivers associated with the expansion of this project in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Questions?
Any questions?
Ms. Dunn's going to get to the next part of her presentation, because that relates to.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any questions before we jump to that?
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
Great. The next part of our presentation is a pass-through of funding from the North Carolina Biotech Center and an agreement between NC Biotech, the city of Greenville, and Patheon Manufacturing Services, also known as Thermo Fisher Scientific. NC Biotech programs fund ideas to impact. So there are six levels of funding offered through NC Biotech for community impact and growth. This helps create a sustainable pipeline for our talent to be able to perform in those biotechnology and life sciences field, which is an industry that we focus on here in Greenville and Pitt County. What this development agreement would be would be a performance-based grant to a local unit of government to support life science economic development projects, such as Project Lucky. This agreement is between the city of Greenville, Thermo Fisher, Patheon Manufacturing Services, and the NC Biotech to partner to identify benefit benefiting the company and our community. What this is proposed to do is to provide funding for the expansion of the Pharma K Twelve program, providing local training and job placement opportunities for our high school graduates. The city of Greenville will be the administrator of the grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the creation of a hundred and twenty-five jobs of those two hundred and ninety jobs that have been approved for this project. This would take place sometime between the third quarter of 2021 through 2024. Questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Bell?
I don't have any questions, but I will say I love when y'all come present, because it always means positive things for our community. It means that investments are coming to our city, jobs are being created, and we're elevating the quality of life for so many different people. So thank y'all for all the work that y'all do at the Alliance.
Thank you.
Spoken like a good board member. All right. Any other questions? Ms. Dunn?
Is there a public hearing?
Sure is.
I have a question for the mayor. I'll wait.
All right. At the very end, you want to ask? Oh, my goodness. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. Public hearing is now open. Those speaking on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. All right. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Smiley?
Before we motion, can you summarize the item? You said there were two parts of the item. Is that what you were?
There are two parts, Councilmember Smiley. The first is the pass-through, which is the funds from the North Carolina Biotech Center. That's item twenty-seven. Item twenty-eight is the waiver of one hundred thousand dollars of the permit fees.
And the pass-through is a hundred thousand dollar?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a net, between the two items, it's a net?
Well, the pass-through is simply a grant from the Biotech Center, passed through the city to, so it, we have to budget the funds, but it doesn't really.
It's not our money.
Right. Item number twenty-eight is a waiver of fees.
Okay. So we get a hundred thousand dollars, we pass that on, and then we waive two hundred thousand dollars of our own funds. So there is a, okay.
Correct. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Glover, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-eight is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the Economic Development Agreement with Patheon Manufacturing LLC for Project Lucky. This item would provide for the waiver of the hundred thousand dollars with the permit fees, up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
We have done the presentation, Mayor, so we're open for the public.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Those speaking on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember, or was it? Were you the first? Okay.
I was.
It was Councilmember Robinson, and second by Councilmember Bell. And I believe we've got a question or a comment.
Just a comment, just wanted to sort of echo to Councilmember Bell's point that this is the kind of, this is the kind of act or action that that shows how the city can be a partner in economic development projects. So I'm very glad to see this, glad to see the project, and happy to vote in support of it.
All right. Any other comments before we take a vote? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are cruising right along. We're going to move on to other items of business. Madam manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-nine is a resolution to authorize loan terms for the Arlington Trace Development and to authorize execution of loan documents. And I'll call forward the planner, Tiana Berryman, for that presentation. Ms. Berry?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
I am here this evening because in December of 2021, council approved a one million dollar home commitment to supplement the development of one hundred and eighty units in Arlington Trace, which is a Taft Mills project that's received four percent tax credits from the state. All right. So this will be a one hundred and twenty-eight million dollar project. All right. So this will be a one hundred and twenty-eight million dollar project. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. This will be a hundred and... A twenty-eight million dollar project that will benefit low-income families at or below sixty percent of the area median income. Rent rates will range from four hundred... Excuse me, six hundred and forty-two dollars to eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and will remain affordable for a period of thirty years. All right. Ten percent of these units, or eighteen, will be set aside for veterans and domestic violence victims with onsite supportive services. Okay? So you can see the site is just south of Arlington Boulevard at the Dickinson Avenue intersection.
That's not showing up.
It's not. Slide. It's a little delayed. There we go. Okay? All right. So the specifics of the agreement include a principal sum of one...
Can you go back to the... We didn't see any of your slides, so you might want to...
Oh, okay.
If there was something crucial on the slides, you might want to show it to them. Thanks.
All right. Here's a rendering of the development so you can see what the proposed development will look like. Right? Here's some numbers. I can go over those again if... Okay. All right. And everyone can see where the site's located.
Is this the... This the one we annexed?
It's correct.
Just a few minutes ago.
That's right.
Only because you told me.
All right. So the specifics of the agreement include the one million dollar principal at zero percent interest with a balloon repayment at twenty years. The eighteen units that are set aside for those at risk for homelessness. Staff will monitor annually to ensure compliance as well as general operations. Okay? And here's an overview of the timeline of activities. Most importantly, council approved the one million dollar commitment on December sixth of 2021. Our next steps include completion of environmental review and anticipated closing in sixty days, give or take. That will allow for groundbreaking to begin by the fall. So staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the loan of one million dollars from the Home Investment Partnership Fund for Arlington Trace LLC and the city manager to execute the required loan documents.
Any questions for Ms. Berryman? Councilmember Blackburn.
So the eighteen... So there'll be sort of a rent-controlled situation. Do I have that correct?
That's correct.
And then there are eighteen units that will, I guess, have no rent.
So... Mr. Mills, Mr. Dustin Mills is here and can speak to the intended operation and how that will work. I don't know that all the details have been ironed out, but he can give you more detail.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just kind of interested in the mechanism of this. I mean, it sounds like a great project.
Sure. So this was financed with tax-exempt bonds and tax credits under the tax credit program. And what that means is that all of the rents, a hundred percent of the rents, will be sixty percent or below area median income. The set-aside units fall within that same criteria, so there are rents associated with it. It's just that we're setting aside the units to identify those specific units for individuals who are veterans, who have been impacted by domestic violence, and then we provide the onsite support.
And will this be managed by a management company or does this fall under... Is there any city authority for management or...
Right. So our development team will own the development privately, but we use a third-party management company that's tentatively planned to be Excel Property Management out of Raleigh. And Excel specializes in tax credit rent management because it's highly specialized, lots of paperwork, lots of requirements for the residents. But Excel's probably one of the biggest in North Carolina in that specific field.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comment.
Comment. Councilmember Daniels.
I think I said this before when you initially came before us, and I just wanted to repeat. I think this is a wonderful project. It is rare throughout North Carolina that we have places for domestic violence victims, and that is very important as they start their new lives. So I appreciate this project.
Any other comments, questions?
To approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley. I believe it was second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the very last item on the agenda, item number thirty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-one is a budget ordinance amendment number eleven to the twenty-one, twenty-two City of Greenville budget. The Engineering Capital Projects Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the Special Revenue Grants Fund, and the Occupancy Tax Fund. Financial Services Byron, Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has the presentation.
It was actually really cruel that we had him show up at the beginning of the meeting, gave him an award, and then made him wait till the very end of the meeting to give his presentation.
He had... He's had a wonderful night.
He's enjoyed watching it.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Budget Amendment eleven. Budget Amendment eleven includes adjustments to eight funds. The General Fund, the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund, the Fleet Maintenance Fund, the Public Works Capital Projects Fund, the Occupancy Tax Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Breakdown of the amendments. We are recognizing grant funding received for the Police Department Support Team Assistance Response, or STAR, program. That's an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Recognizing donation funding received for the Wildwood Mountain Bike Trails at Wildwood Park. That's an increase to the Wreck and Parks Capital Projects Fund of just over five hundred thousand dollars. We are recognizing grant revenue received for additional ADA transit service provided in the current fiscal year. That's a neutral impact to both the General Fund and the Transit Fund of thirty-one thousand dollars. We are transferring funding that was originally budgeted for the employee parking lot to the Correct Capital Projects Fund. It's a neutral impact to the Public Works Capital Project Fund and the Engineering Capital Project Fund of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We are increasing the Fleet Maintenance Fund to account for increased fuel expenses for city vehicles in the current fiscal year. It's an increase to the Fleet Fund of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are reallocating bond proceeds from the twenty-twenty-one limited obligation bond issuance in the current fiscal year to properly reflect the final construction cost for each of the projects in that bond issuance. That's a neutral impact to the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund and the Fire Rescue Project Fund, Capital Projects Fund of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We are recognizing revenue received from the One NC Fund as pass-through grant funding for the World Cat Project, the World Cat Company. That's an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We are reallocating a portion of the sanitation fund vehicle replace... Excuse me, sanitation funds vehicle replacement fund payment to pay for lease side loaders within the sanitation fund. It's a neutral impact to the vehicle replacement fund of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We are reallocating additional funds needed for... From the General Fund to the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund for the Recreation and Parks Comprehensive Master Plan Project, as mentioned earlier this evening. That's an increase to the Wreck and Parks Capital Project... Yes, excuse me, the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund of twenty-two thousand dollars. We are adjusting the FY twenty-one, twenty-two General Fund revenues to project actual and record projected year-end appropriations for the current fiscal year. It's a neutral impact to the General Fund of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are reallocating excess funding from the Public Works Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund for additional project designs within the current fiscal year. It's a net neutral impact to the Public Works Capital Project Fund and the General Fund of twenty-two thousand dollars. And lastly, we are recognizing additional occupancy tax received in the current fiscal year. It's an increase to the occupancy tax fund of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So as a result of these amendments, this increases the City of Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance to a hundred and fifty-three point five million dollars. And staff recommends approval of the Operating Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hayes? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ooh, I think I'm going to give Councilmember Blackburn that. And I will have the second by... How about Councilmember Daniels? All right.
We were tag-teaming on that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report.
That is unbelievable. All right. Let's start down here at this end. Councilmember Daniels.
Okay. First, I would like to thank Recreation and Parks. They took me all around Greenville yesterday. We had a wonderful time seeing the improvements that are coming to Wildwood Park and the Epps Center. Just wonderful things happen with Recreation and Parks throughout Greenville. And also Saturday... No, I'm sorry. This Sunday at Recreation at West Greenville... It's not West Greenville anymore. I'm showing my age now, right? Epps Recreational Park, Jackie Robinson Baseball Ceremony will be held at three o'clock, and that's at four hundred Nash Street. And then we have several Juneteenth events next weekend. The first will be held by the West Greenville Health Council, and that'll be at Thomas Foreman Park on six eighteen from ten until one. We have Greenville Grooves. That is not a Juneteenth event, but because June is Black Music Month, we'll be celebrating that afterwards. We will have fireworks. Is that correct, Ms. Octagon?
That's correct.
Okay. So we will have fireworks that evening. Saturday, there'll be several events throughout Greenville. Pick one. They'll be on Albemarle Avenue, Fifth Street, the Town Common. We're going to have a wonderful Juneteenth holiday. And then on Sunday, we will have a sunrise service at six thirty a.m. by Sycamore Hill Church at the Gateway Plaza. We'd love for everybody to come out. I know it's early, but we can do it. And because Juneteenth also lands on Father's Day, I wish everyone, all our men and fathers, a happy Father's Day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just wanted to say that looking out into the gallery, it is a wonderful feeling to be here. I have been overjoyed to have been re-elected to this work that I really enjoy. I love this work. Why do I love this work? I like all the phone calls. I really do. I like it when people have a problem and they feel that they can call us or call me and to get help. I like when people say, you know what? I really don't like this thing that's on your agenda, and I want to tell you why. Because that is the heart and soul of representative democracy. It gets tough sometimes when they say, I don't like this item, and I'm thinking, eh, I do. And you got to figure that out, and you got to try to figure it out with diplomacy and grace and respect. I'm also a policy wonk, and our city manager probably knows what I'm talking about. I hold a master of public administration. I love policy. I love the work that goes into developing it, whether it's the meetings of people that we call stakeholders. These are just people who care and are going to be affected by a policy. I love working on the policy, and then I love the administration of that policy. There's a lot of stuff when you get an ordinance that's not written. How much of it do you want to write? I love all of that. So I'm just delighted to be here. I'm delighted to be representing the people of District Three. It's a district that I've, of course, lived in for more than twenty years. I love the district and very much looking forward to this work. I also want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be sitting up amongst such a fine group of council members and that I look forward to working with you. I do have a request that I'd like to make tonight, and we... Councilmember Daniels has been talking about parks. We've talked a lot about parks tonight. We've seen a lot of improvements that have been taking place at our parks. It's so exciting. And the master plan of master plans is just... Is more evidence of the investments that we put in our parks and how much we care about our parks. So that's great news. I'm specifically interested in parks in District Three. So as such, I wanted to make a request for information for future agenda. I'm requesting information on all parks in District Three. I'd like to know what are their current needs met and unmet? Where are we with their master plans? Some of them have master plans, some of them don't. Some of them have master plans that I don't think have had anything done toward them. I'm thinking specifically of Eastside Park. It still doesn't even have a picnic table, swing set, doesn't even have a parking space. And I know there have been some questions about how to get into Eastside Park, and hopefully we can address those as we talk about our parks. I'm also interested in, you know, where are we with the dog park? I know there were some improvements when it was first opened in two thousand and seven. I haven't seen any. I have a lot... I have dogs, and I go over there. I have friends with dogs. Haven't seen those improvements. So where are we with upcoming improvements for parks in District Three? Where are we with master plans? I don't know. Does the dog park have a master plan? Does it need a master plan? There's a lot beside the dog park. At one point, we were going to do a master plan for that area. We had some ideas. I think Disc Golf was discussed. Beautiful, beautiful piece of land. I know Frogs has done a fantastic job with the Shade Garden right there on the water. I go there. I'm a runner. I run past there. Absolutely gorgeous, gorgeous location. How much money was spent last year on each park? How much money is allocated in the budget that we just approved for each park in District Three? Wildwood Park, we have had so much fantastic publicity. We've got private fundraising. So the contribution of, if I got this right, on more than five hundred thousand dollars. To me, what we see with Wildwood Park has given us cause and given us inspiration to feel inspired for all of our parks throughout our city. I think it's really raised the bar for what we can do with parks, for how we can approach our parks, what we can expect of a park. And so I'm hoping that we can kind of bring that enthusiasm and just the great things that are happening there, that we can bring it to all of our parks, and specifically in District Three, I'm interested. So those are my questions. That's my request, and I'm very excited to learn more about our parks, where we are, where we are with our master plans and improvements, unmet and met maintenance needs, and look forward to hearing more information from you about that at some point in the future. And again, wanted to mention that it is Pride Month, and we hear a lot about Pride Month. And often it comes down to, you know, rainbows and often rainbow consumer goods. It's very serious for people who have a different identity than maybe one that is considered the mainstream. And I just want to say that if you have questions or if you... There's things you don't understand. You know, we've got pronouns. We have different types of expression. If you have a question, ask someone. These are people that we love, and they want to tell you if you don't understand. So that's my thought for Pride Month. Always be open to learning and listening to people who have a different story, and they will share that with you. Last, again, I'm delighted to be back, and thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Smiley.
I have no comments.
Okay. How about Councilmember Bell?
Skipping the Mayor Pro Tim. All right. Saving the best for last.
That's why I'm going last.
I would like to wish my big brother, or I guess I should say older brother, I'm bigger than him, if you're watching. But wish him a happy thirty-third birthday. You're getting old on us. And then Councilmember Blackburn, you'll be excited to know that in the capital improvement plan, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars planned for the dog park at Town Common. So there's an answer to one of the questions. And then outside of that, you know, just hope that the Pirates really do a good job this weekend. You know, you guys have done a really good job. You've earned a lot of respect throughout the nation and brought a lot of attention to Greenville. And I was in Louisville, Kentucky earlier this week on business and had a couple people... I was wearing some pirate gear and had them mention, you know, how well we had done. And it was just cool to be, you know, almost halfway across the country and have people, you know, notice that brand and notice that that was a part of Greenville, North Carolina. So that's all I've got. Good luck, guys. Thank you.
All right. Here we go. Councilmember Robinson.
Well, everybody probably watched on TV thinking, don't let him talk because he'll never stop.
I wasn't going to tell you, so I got like six text messages. No, I'm just kidding.
You probably did. First, I'm so excited to be here and deal with each of you. And the staff have been so kind to try and get me up to speed. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate it and how much I look forward to dealing with each of my council members. I am truly excited like a little kid in the candy shop, and I hope you'll be patient with me because I've got a learning curve, and staff is understanding that and bringing me up to speed, and I appreciate all that. I do want to say this, Councilmember Daniels, I join you with Jackie Robinson Baseball League. I've been supporting them for a couple of years now with Norman Warren and Randy, and played basketball with Randy a long time ago. That probably tells you how long it's been. That's a great baseball program. We support them wholeheartedly, and please get out and go support that program. It's wonderful. All our baseball programs are. In that same vein, let's go support our Pirates. This is a huge deal for the City of Greenville. Those kids have played hard. Coach Goblin has done a miraculous job with those kids. hard, Coach Goblin has done a miraculous job with those kids, not only as baseball players, but as creating young men, he's doing a job that people just don't understand. So congratulations to him, I know they're down in the Town Commons, having a big power rally down there, and, and music and whatnot, so let's cheer for our Pirates all weekend, let's hope they make it to the next step. Second, or third I guess I should say, having come up from planning and zoning, I've been down, I stay on the front lines, and I will tell everybody here, staff for the City of Greenville do an amazing job, we all as councilmen need to be very thankful, 'cause I can tell you Shontae Goobie, and she knows this, is she still here with us? Are you here, Shontae?
She took off.
Took off, okay. They do a wonderful job of getting materials together, so I want you guys to know, when you make these appointments, these commissions run so fluid and flawlessly because of staff. Next, the members I serve with were awesome, thank you guys if you're watching, thank you for working with me, I enjoyed it. And then finally, excuse me, congratulations to all the people who are graduating, all these kids, it's exciting for the grandparents, the parents, I'm excited, my child just graduated, and they left me and went down to Cancun, so I was here with my son. And then finally, I guess I'll conclude by saying this, is I am so excited to grow Greenville greater, and work on the progress that this commission, I mean, this, this council has made, and I truly, truly look forward to working with everybody. And those watching at home, please give us a call if you have anything, thank you, everybody in the audience who came here and took your time tonight to come and watch us and give your voices and be heard, 'cause I'm a big believer in, everybody's voice needs to be heard. Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, thank you for letting me rattle on a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to all the citizens that came out tonight and to be with us, and we hope you come back again, because it's very seldom that people come, and it's good to look out there and see someone that looks like me at a meeting. So I'm really thankful for you all coming down tonight, don't let this be your last one, and we look forward to working with you. Have, you have any problems, you have my phone number, everybody in the city has my phone number, 'cause I've given it out on the, on the council meeting so many times, you can call me at 252-752-1113, or 252-714-3970. I got it right this time, I normally give people 76, which is my husband's number. But I wanna thank you all for, for coming out.
Junior's gonna change his phone number now. I ain't signed up for this.
But this is really serious business, because we are making rules and, and things for the city that affects our whole city. And it's good to be able to work together as a council to have these things done, we had the opportunity to speak with each other on issues that we feel good about or don't feel good about. But it's good that we have a council, and we're getting along fine, and we've not had any problems. So I just thank God for all of you, and for being patient with this little lady sitting up here, and hopefully I'll make it to the next.
We all hope that's the case.
No, I, I, I'll make it anyway, I'm just geared up for the summer, we do get a month off, and I'm ready for it. So I'm ready to, to get out and visit someone and, and see my new grandbaby, see my granddaughter who graduated from Howard University Law School, she's busy in the books now, she'll say, Grandma, I'm in the grocery store, I have a few minutes to talk to you. So I just really thank God for all God has bestowed upon everyone in this city, and my family, and our great city council members. Thank you, both serving.
All right, thank you very much, I'm gonna be short and sweet. Make sure you please support our Pirates this weekend, tomorrow at 12 o'clock, if you can't make it out to the stadium, I understand, it's gonna be on ESPN2, it's a very big deal for our community, it's good to be able to welcome as many people into our community as possible. It, I believe I think I read in the, I think it was the paper today, that they said that I think this last weekend brought in a million dollars of economic stimulus into our economy this last, this last weekend. So this weekend, we're gonna see Texas come here, we're gonna welcome a lot of people here. But in addition to that, we've got our high school students that are graduating this weekend, so we're gonna have a lot more people coming in. So if you're riding on the streets, and it's very congested, make sure you blame your city council members and not the mayor, okay? The mayor had nothing to do with it, he's just bringing in, he's just bringing in the money, okay? But the city council members are responsible for the traffic this weekend. So make sure you wish all of our high school students a congratulations, they're graduating, I hope many of them are attending East Carolina University, if they're not, hopefully they're gonna be coming back to Greenville, making Greenville their permanent home when they're done with their schooling, and we'll look forward to continuing to grow in our city. So with that, I am going to kick it over to our city attorney for a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. And second reason pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuit entitled, Shawn Rambert, Senior Co-Administrator of the Estate of Shawn Michael Rambert, Jr., and Danielle Cox Rambert, Co-Administrator of the Estate of Shawn Michael Rambert, Jr., plaintiffs versus the City of Greenville, and David Brandon Johnson and his individual and official capacities defendants.
So moved, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are in closed session.
The East Coast Greenway is a walking and biking route that stretches 3,000 miles from Maine to Florida.
Outdoor recreation tourism is now the fastest-growing market segment in the travel industry, and that's-